Is the mic on? Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. This is appointed hour. It's 6:00 PM, July 9th. We have a council meeting. At this time, we'd like Dr. Johnson to lead up an invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. All rise please.
Let us pray. Our wise and everlasting God, in the name of Jesus, your children have gathered in a meeting, Lord God, but to conduct your business. Lord God, we ask you to continue to lead in the guide and direct our hearts and our minds as we conduct the business of Marlboro County. We ask a special blessing upon the Brock family that your peace and love continue to carry them and all those who are spirits bereavement. We ask a special blessing upon the Oden family and the McNair family that your healing angels touch right now in the name of Jesus. Lord God, we ask that your guidance and your knowledge infiltrate this room right now and that your love continue to revive us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the spirit of liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Everybody may be seated. Okay. What we have is, we need to, before we go to the approval of a, hey, Mr. Miss, how you doing? Agenda item, we need to add a couple of things last minute. Upon the presentation, Tony Clappert, the administrator, Mr. Clappert, we need to add that one. Got that on your amended agenda. Upon the new business, order number 852, order number 853, and order number 854.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the amended items that stated. Second.
Motion have been made in second. All in favor?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm always reluctant to adding new things to the agenda, even if it is a first reading. So, I like to...
It just came to the administrator's attention this morning.
Okay.
And that's why we want to just add and keep moving, get the process moving.
Okay.
That's why we added, we don't like to add nothing at the last minute, but it been, it came in this morning and it's something that, at first reading only, so we have plenty of time to discuss and deliberate. Any more questions, any more discussions? Okay, we got motion and the second. All in favor for the adding the opposed items? Okay, we got six. And opposed? One opposed. Okay, let it be noted. Now, approval of minutes on May 14th, 2014. Any corrections or anything we need to do to amend the minutes? If not hearing none, may I hear motion?
So moved, second.
Motion have been made in second, in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Right. Okay. We have changed our agenda format. We do a recognition of citizens before council. In the future, we'd like everyone to sign up before the 6 o'clock hour. We're gonna go by what we got on file right now. Further, we have coming up, Mr. Ron King.
So, I'm here this evening to talk about a request from the Marlboro County Housing Authority. But first, I would like to say that it was my privilege and my honor to work for five and a half years with Bobby Brock from 2011 through 2016. I had worked in industry for 50 years and he still taught me an amazing amount of stuff about the state of South Carolina and industry and infrastructure that I really didn't have to grasp of, so I just wanted to do that before I go on. I would like to say as an update to the council that the housing authority, which owns and operates the Clio East Apartments, which is right next to the new Clio Grade School, and we also do section eight vouchers for Marlboro County and Dillon County. We're moving forward with separating from Florence Housing Authority. As a matter of fact, that will occur in 82 days from today. So, on September 30th, that'll be the last day that we will be getting administrative correction and work from Florence Housing Authority. We hired a new executive director. We have our policies in place. Things aren't moving as fast as we'd like for them to with HUDN. Seems that they have a lot of regulations, but we're gonna be fully functional and we have very experienced staff. We're keeping the staff that are there, plus the new director has 20 years' experience. So, we feel like not only will we be doing as good a job, we'll be doing better job. And I'd like to request that if you get a chance, you look at, we're one board member short, so we're still looking for an appointment for that one board member. And I would be glad to come back in September and make another report, make another request. In August, I'll be in Alaska with my wife, so we'll be able to make that anyway. And I'm always available for anybody to call me, and a lot of you already have my telephone number, so if you got any questions, just give me a call. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Further, Ms. McCorn?
Good afternoon. I come this afternoon to talk about district that Sister Preddy was also a part of. You know, I spoke last year around August about the dirt rope and the metal that they were throwing in and everything, but Mr. Clappert, he has come out and he has assured us that he will do something about that. But on the top of that, also, I've been back there two more years, it'll be 30 years that I've been back there, and we have yet to have a drainage back there. You know, not only has Richardson Park and Shady Ridge had been flooded out and carried out in boats, we also have been did back there. And the crazy thing about this, when Mr. J.K. Harms was living, and he was a part of these meetings, something was being done, but once he died, he got cut off, and that's not right. And that's not right. We've been fleeing and asking for help, and we have yet to get it. And I've been riding all over the county and stuff, and our roads are the only roads in our district that looks like that. And abandoned houses. Come on, man. Abandoned houses that's been left like the ones in our area, they need to be did something too. I done brought Clappert right there, the syrup right there, and then one day I seen a whole bunch of bees falling on this property, so I called for the animal control. You know, they tell me, they tell me that I need to call up here, somebody to come kill me. Why should I pay for something that I don't own, that the county allow just to sit there and rot in the waste? And now, on top of that, there's 20 or 30 tires back there, and people are starting to continue to drop those tires back there, and there's nothing being done by it. And the coal person, whoever he is, he rides back there and see this, and nothing being done by it. Just don't understand. I could go on and on, but to tell you the truth, it's like the county just forgot about us. Like I said one time before, once you cross 401, the only park I see for our kids to play in is at the project. If we wanna play, that's why we gotta go to Clio Open. That's a crying shame, man. Come on, we live in this county also. We need some help. And I heard this Preddy begging and pleading for it, but don't look like nobody wanna be on his side. And that's just all I got to say.
Okay, Ms. Pamela.
I'll start by saying, she was saying to Mr. Clappert, he reached out to me. He noticed I was going to city council meetings for three years, and then our line got crossed, but I'm here now. I too have complaints about ordinances being enforced. Anything, this is, I brought this out to my, this bill was passed in 2018. It just goes on to, and I was originally go over it. About animal control, nothing is enforced here, there's no call to call for anything. You can call repeatedly, over and over and over, and nothing's ever done, and they'll never call you back. And that burden of not doing anything like that is, it messes up the underpinning of people's homes. You have cats springing, you have them having their home. You have dogs that are in packs, they're dangerous. I've said it over and over again, and no one's put any urgency into any of it, but I will try to go over regardless, and I feel like our ordinances are behind or old. I feel like some of them haven't been updated in like 10 or 15 years, but this is still the South Carolina one, so it still has to be forced by this, and it didn't. I'm just gonna get on my favorites, gender of dogs. Everyone knows what it is, and I'm sure it's in Clio, Lindon, and it's everywhere in the south, but it shouldn't be allowed. They go through so many points about it, why you're not supposed to do it, it's a misdemeanor if you do it, you get fined, whatever, there's money to be made, but it goes on to say, what animal control, do they have the authority, they don't enforce it, it goes on to say, if the person doesn't, they have to find a pay, the first time, second time. I think the traffic meter release program, I don't know what's happening with that here, but nothing. Just 'cause there's cats and cats, and I don't know if anybody knows what I do for a living, but there's cats in the vicious park and Shady Ridge, and there's no help. No help at all. And nobody don't want that from their neighborhood, their neighbors, and nobody wants that. And no one comes and helps them at all. And if you try to help, you get in trouble where you hit the front shoulder or you're the backup in the story. So, yeah, the cat situation is atrocious, it's out of control, and like I said, nothing's ever enforced, it's putting the burden on human society, which is so overcrowded, ridiculous. And like I said, the city council means, why don't y'all go look, go look at the human society and see how it is? And this, I don't know if I have three minutes or not, you can go, y'all. So, the definition of animal control officer means, a person who is employed or punctual or otherwise engaged primarily to enforce laws related to animal control. And I'm telling you, that's not happening here. In my humble opinion, not on the city level and not on the county level. And if you need proof, I got pictures, I got emails, I got texts, I got Facebook messages, I got years of stuff. So, you can probably look if you want to, but, and I'm sorry about that, I have a bunch of stuff in my show here, because I have pictures of it. And I need that to you. And I ask y'all kindly, just, just please get your animal control officers to do this, and it's quite frankly their job, you know? It's what you're paid to do.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Mr. Benjamin. Is you, you up?
Hello, everyone.
Uh huh.
Good afternoon. Eric, I wanted to ask you here in McCall, I just wanna come and talk about two things that we had, that we had. June 11th through 16th, we had our first hanging affair here in McCall. And while we were going back to, we went down, he'd been thanking everyone to do it. I had faith, I believed it, we pushed it, going here, I kept saying that people come out. We all work hard, and I was on the cruise. My heart was all into it. My wife said, Eric, leave McCall alone. But I got a phone call from one of our council group. It's the first day, the guy said that he could not believe the people came out, surrounded area. And I'm making real fast. Within four days, we had thousands of people that came to the fair for success. And we want to thank the county, the people of Benfield, we had people of Florence that came to McCall. And we are set for next year, it's gonna be bigger and better. So, thank y'all all that supported, and it was a great success. Also, we want to talk about our upcoming, we got a summer blast, summer blast is on July the 20th. I'll talk real fast. We got bouncing houses, hoop vendors, it's from 10 to 10, but most likely gonna be 10 level. We got Mr. Preston Duffy off of America Auto Contest. We got Let's Make a Deal, hoop contest, Jump Rope, Jump Rope. We got Water Games, Name Neptune. We got Kids Glow Party, we got Moon Town. So, if anybody gonna report this, please come out. It's July the 20th, and if anybody will, like I say, come out and join us up. It's a lot of reporting. All right, one last thing. So, the beauty of my park, we all have our first McCall Gospel Fest. We held it at CW Little Park. That's where our prayer was, at CW Little Park. I'm asking, we all gonna have Southern Gospel, we got gospel, we got port-ent, pregnant worship, our kids on, we got special guests, we got American Red Cross on there, and please, we are looking for people to donate blood. We gotta have a mill of 30 people, so if anybody gonna be a part of that, please come out. From 12 to 4, American Cross will be there. But I need to be signed up, you need to be signed up, we're looking at all this to make sure. And one more thing, please, I'm asking for everybody to support. We serve one God. I'm praying, trying to pray all fortune together. I'm looking to have anywhere from $3 to $5 a person at this event. I got a special guest, I will announce that in August. I don't wanna say guest name now, but I wanna put a call, not just a call, I'm gonna put Marlboro County on the map, where I need help with sponsorship. I did send out numbers, if any of y'all have got any numbers, please be able to, and those that, that don't wanna be a sponsor, you can help out by purchasing a t-shirt. We got a nice t-shirt, it's only $20, but it going, it going to this free thing, it gonna have kids on, and fire worship at end, but please, come out, worship. It gonna be a great thing. September 14th. Thank y'all.
Okay.
And I do have some flowers, if anybody wants some, and I do have vendors and sponsorship paper, if anybody, you know, wanna reach out to me, my town in McCall, anyway. Thank y'all. Do I need this, and you, we have to hang it up somewhere?
Okay. Mr. and Ms. John Ray?
It's, I just wanna echo, you thanked a brother sitting right there, he stayed a couple streets over from me, but we live in the same neighborhood, about the road or something. I just had a flag, I said it came from, I'm pretty sure it was my truck's parking, I just haven't given it, and I rode that flag again, but like I said, I went to a meet, we went to several meetings in the wild, over there, Old Highway Park, about the road. Like I said, he been living out there almost 30 years, but we on it about 15 years, and like I said, I, I spoke, I told him, say, there's rocks, it bring down there every so often. I mean, it could be paved and saved by then, I just know, all those years. Yeah, little smart answer from one of the guys, I can't remember the name of it. Now, secondly, boy, I got some of the rocks out there. There's some, there's some rocks, it's on there. Second, I think I'm aware that Marlboro County has a nuisance, law or whatever. Right where our property is, 327th Avenue, have this big sidewalk there. I think my uncle say he used to work there when he was, you know, and he did, he gone use 80 something when he died. And about four years ago, those people, some squelled on it, I guess they, they came and knocked a hole in the sidewalk. And it's a lot of building, and if that thing was having to fall, any time it gonna fall, I think it would have to fall and destroy our house, I'm gonna give, that's how big it is. And lately, some guys have come over there, plus the semen up, get carried off, and I got to talk to one of the guys, I gave him a phone number, called the guy. Called the guy up, he gave you a small answer, whatever, I didn't mind my business, whatever, but like I said, that's, that thing is forever dangerous. When wind go, you hit a tin rock, or whatever. With one thing, it would knock a hole in, like it was on church, I don't know what reason to do that for, but it can be done that, and like I said, we were complaining about this, like I said, we been out there 15 years, about the road, and that loose is danger with that sidewalk. Nothing been done about it. I mean, that's just what we talking about.
Okay. All righty, that concludes concerned citizen requests. We have on the dock right now, the executive session, discuss contractual matters.
Sure. Make a motion to go on the executive session to discuss contractual matter.
Second motion. Okay. Motion have been made in second. Show hands. Okay, unanimous. Lady Jeffries, we'll be right back, it'll be a short TV break. Enjoy, entertain the people while we go. George, entertain the people while we go.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Good evening, Marlboro County. I have the pleasure of doing the presentation on behalf of remembering what I consider a very good friend. And this is not about being another victim, it's about giving everybody a chance to come and help with the presentation. But I just want to say that my first day on this job was July 24, 2023, and I got a call from Mr. Bobby Brock on that day. And he talked to me, and he called back the next week. He called back about three or four more weeks. Every week just to check on, he needed me. He just checked on how things were going. And that was a little bit strange for me. Because I just didn't expect to get someone in this community like that and just start calling and checking all day. And I've always considered him a really good friend. He's called Uncle Bobby. And so it really is a pleasure to be here and to help present this to his family. I know you want to say something. He was not just a friend to Marlboro County, but he was also one of the founding members, charter members of the Economic Development Partnership in Marlboro County. And we all know that he was Marlboro owner. He helped serve a lot of people in Marlboro County. And he did that in a way that he and his family can be proud forever. And so I do want to call the family up and get some pictures. Anyone that's on the partnership board, I would like to talk as well. Now, I give it to you. Marlboro County Economic Development Partnership, Marlboro County Economic Development Lifetime Achievement Award, recognizing Robert Bobby Brock for his lifelong service, commitment to community excellence, and outstanding economic development efforts in Marlboro County, presented here July 9, 2024.
I want to thank you for this. Bobby served in Marineland as an accountant. And he worked so hard for this county. He won the best for this county, and he worked very hard to try to do it. And we, we girls, I appreciate it so much. Thank you for your training and that.
All right. We continue on with this meeting. We go into old business. Ordinance number 8348. The ordinance reading negotiating the renewal of the Marlboro County Agreement with the Title of Call to provide fire protection within a designated unincorporated area of Marlboro County to include an increase of $5,000. Currently $50,000. We negotiated to $55,000. Payable to the Title of Call for fire protection equipment. Third reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number 8348.
Second, third, fourth.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. The Title of Call requested for $75,000 to be used for upgrade of Title Park, including playground equipment, rubber mat, moocs, and board of a new fitness shelter and bathroom throughout the image campaign. The mayor obviously spoke on that.
We've already spoken on this, and I think we're going to go ahead and table this. And move forward some. Do some good work.
Right. Sounds good. Okay, so we can get most of the tape of this. Motion been made second and discussion. Here and now, show of hands. Unanimous. Okay. New business. A resolution number 072401. A resolution authorizing an agreement for the execution of, to purchase the property located on Sherrill Street, Banfield, South Carolina, between Marlboro County and as purchaser, and seller to be proposed to utilization the property of multiple purposes. Any, Ms. Clabber, anything you say on that?
No, this is just a resolution authorizing payment. Authorizing agreement and execution to purchase. This authorizes all things of purchase. And so.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept resolution 072401.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. The Title of Call requested for $75,000 to be used for upgrade of Title Park, including playground equipment, rubber mats, moocs, and board of a new fitness shelter and bathroom throughout the image campaign. The mayor obviously spoke on that.
We've already spoken on this, and I think we're going to go ahead and table this. And move forward some. Do some good work.
Right. Sounds good. Okay, so we can get most of the tape of this. Motion been made second and discussion. Here and now, show of hands. Unanimous. Okay. New business. A resolution number 072401. A resolution authorizing an agreement for the execution of, to purchase the property located on Sherrill Street, Banfield, South Carolina, between Marlboro County and as purchaser, and seller to be proposed to utilization the property of multiple purposes. Any, Ms. Clabber, anything you say on that?
No, this is just a resolution authorizing payment. Authorizing agreement and execution to purchase. This authorizes all things of purchase. And so.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept resolution 072401.
Second. Motion been made second and discussion. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Ordinance number 8, this will be added onto the agenda. Ordinance number 852. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of fee and lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Project Pinky Promise to provide for payment of fee and lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters thereto. First reading. Title only.
This is just an economic development project that is going to be on the Marlboro County, or staying in Marlboro County. Just want to go ahead and watch how long.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number 852.
Second. Motion been made second and discussion.
Discussion. As I stated when this came before, so I'm not saying I'm against it, but I have to stick with my reason that I'd rather have known about this before now. But I understand it was a last minute thing.
Yeah, we just heard about it.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not against it, but.
Didn't say yes, Ms. LaFell.
That's it.
Okay. We heard the discussion. There's a motion. It's made second. All in favor, show of hands. Okay. Those opposed? Those abstaining? What abstained? Okay. Ordinance number 853. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of fee and lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Project Palm Kate to provide for payment of fee and lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits.
Now, I'll give it to you. Marlboro County Economic Development Partnership, Marlboro County Economic Development Lifetime Achievement Award, recognizing Robert Bobby Rock for his lifelong service, commitment to community excellence, and outstanding economic development efforts in Marlboro County. Presented here July ninth, twenty twenty-four.
I want to thank you for this. Bobby served in Marineland as a so proud. And he worked so hard for this county. He wanted to invest in this county for the work of the county. And he worked very hard to try to, and we we girls, I appreciate it so much. We appreciate you for that.
Thank y'all. All right, um, and we continue on with this meeting. We go into old business. Ordinance number eight-three-four-eight. The ordinance, we're negotiating the renewal of the Marlboro County Agreement with the Title of Call to provide fire protection within a designated unincorporated area of Marlboro County to include a an increase of five thousand dollars, currently fifty thousand, renegotiated to fifty-five thousand, payable to the Title of Call for fire protection equipment. Third reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number eight, second, three, four.
Motion been made and second. Uh, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. The Title of Call requested for seventy-five thousand dollars to be used for upgrade of Title Park, including playground equipment, rubber mat, moocs, and board of a new fitness shelter and bathroom throughout the image campaign. Um, the mayor already spoken on that.
We've already spoken on this, and I think we're gonna go ahead and table this and we're gonna do some, do some uh, good work.
Right. Sounds good. Okay, so we gotta get most of the tape of this, um.
Second.
Motion been made second and discussion. Hear none, show of hands. Unanimous, okay. New business. A resolution number oh-seven-two-four-oh-one. A resolution authorizing an agreement for the execution of, to purchase the property located on Sherrill Street, Bennetville, South Carolina, between Marlboro County and as purchaser and seller to be proposed to a utilization, the property of multiple purposes. Any, um, Ms. Clabber, anything you say on that?
No, this is just uh, resolution authorizing payment.
Okay.
Authorizing agreement on execution to purchase. It's authorized for all things, right, and and purchase. And so, um.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept resolution oh-seven-two-four-zero-one.
Second. Motion been made second and discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Ordinance number eight, this will be added onto the agenda. Order number eight-five-two. The ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of fee in lieu of averlating of taxes agreement by and between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Project Pinky Promise to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters there to first reading title only.
This is just an economic development project that is uh, going to be on the Marlboro County or staying in Marlboro County. Just wanna go ahead and watch how long.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number eight-five-two.
Second. Motion been made second and discussion.
Discussion.
Yes.
I'm I'm, as I stated when it was came before, so I'm not saying I'm against it, but I have to stick with my reason that I'd rather have known about this before now, but I understand it was a last minute thing.
Yeah, we just heard about it on the.
I I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not against it, but.
Didn't say yes, Ms. Lawford.
That's it.
Okay. We heard the discussion, there's a motion, it was made second. All in favor, show hands. Okay, those opposed? Those abstaining? One abstaining. Okay, order number eight-five-three. The ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of fee in lieu of averlating of taxes agreement by and between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Project Powerball to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. Title only, first reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number eight-five-three.
Second. Motion been made and second and discussion. Hear none, all in favor, show of hands. Those opposed? Those abstaining? One abstention. Order number eight-five-four. The ordinance authorize the execution and delivery of fee in lieu of averlating of taxes agreement by and between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Project Powerball to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. Title only, first reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number eight-five-four.
Second. Motion been second and discussion. All in favor? Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay, moving on. Appointed board and commission. Do you have anybody who would be appointed to the board or commission?
Mr. Chair, I have the announcement. Uh, I want to make a recommend, recommendation for appointment to the Housing Authority Board, now known as the Housing and Community Development Rea Thought, Redevelopment Authority of Marlboro County. At present, this board consists of four members, but was designed for five members. We need to review the ordinance possibly to increase this the number on this board. However, as of this date, we have not done so. So I offer up as a member of this board, it was Betty Jo Quick. I have her address and telephone number. This Quick has the training and the skills in helping clients secure funding from the South Carolina Housing Trust Fund, the South Carolina Mental Assistance Program, and assists with getting affordable housing with local landlords and housing authorities. She will be a great addition to this board.
Okay.
So, Mr. King, a few minutes ago, this is his recommendations. If that's what you please be okay.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, we have five people on, we got four people on the board, correct? We need, we need five.
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, I know, um, Ms. King had Ms. Pearson, Ashana Pearson, and Chris McGofford, uh, um, what he recommended. But, um, I I think Ms. Betty Jo Quick is, um, a great candidate also. Uh, I think when we, it would expand to a seven man team, a seven board team, we would take these two people in consideration also. But, um, we got, so you making a motion for Ms. Betty Jo Quick?
Uh, at this time to, and appoint Ms. Betty Jo Quick to the board.
Second motion. Second motion.
That motion is second. Any, any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor? Okay. All right, um. We got number, uh, seven of bids at this time. Uh, the financial report, Mr. West Park.
Mr. West Park, I'm very excited. Good evening. Uh, seeing happy for you, we report for the uh, month ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. General fund revenues for the twelve months pending, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, total thirteen million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, in comparison with the twelve months pending, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of fourteen million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. We do have an outstanding collection of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. It is not included in this report, which will make a significant difference with our our revenues. Our general fund expenditures through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, total fourteen million, uh, thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars of a fourteen million, two hundred and twenty-three, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollar budget for ninety-eight point six one percent of budget year to date. Expenditures for the twelve month pending, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, total thirteen million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, approvals of revenues and expenditures adjustment will be, will be made. Uh, current expenditures now exceed revenues and other sources of property tax and fee in lieu payments that collected within the next two months will be included in revenues, which will reduce the shortfall. Uh, over the the following three months, considerable work will be performed by finance staff to close the books. Uh, county financial orders will prepare the finalized reporting in the form of the annual audit and compliance report. I don't know if you have questions, if you could, uh, answer those if this is fine.
We have any questions?
I have comment. Um, unfortunately, we didn't have a finance committee meeting. And in the finance committee meetings, and never in this meeting, but we are starting a new fiscal year. And that means new money, new projects. Um, I I am requesting now that, we never see any POs. There's a lot going on in the county, but we never see any POs about anything. And for this time, I would like for us to make sure in those meetings that we see POs. I'm concerned because I like to agree, but I like to inspect what I'm agreeing. I have no problem with you presenting, but I like to know for sure that these things are in order. So I would like very much that we could get some PO, some other things in in meetings instead of saying compared to last year, this is where we are. And I do appreciate what you're doing.
Fair.
But I would like some more explicit things.
Uh, you have, uh, in front of you the also the attached reports for capital projects funds, uh, forty, fifty, five, seventy, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-five. Uh, the report provides a listing of payments for the budgets for these funds. I'll see the update, uh, these reports each each month. There's been very little activity outside of, uh, Fund Seventy-Five, which is the activity for the long course. So, uh, I'll be glad if there's any questions you might have, or if this is, you know, a discussion later, like the rest of that.
Any other questions, uh, Ms. Park? All right, hear none, um, Ms. Clabber.
Please, um, I have a community I wanna discuss very quickly. Uh, first of all, recreation. Um, we do have a gentleman who is on New York's and Rec, uh, supervisor in their, out of our community. He's been on for a couple of weeks, he's doing extra job. Um, and with recreation, I do wanna announce that football, soccer, and anchility, uh, we're gonna have all three this year. Government, um, bringing anchility, uh, and the football will be community based football. Uh, as we, as a lot of companies have asked that we do that even before I got here. And we're gonna start it this year, community based football, at least. And rec, the recreation registration for these sports is through always fifteen. Anyone who wants to, uh, register and for any of these sports, please call eight-four-three-four-seven-nine-five-six-three-two or you go to marlboro county S C dot my rec dot com and register online. Once again, that's eight-four-three-four-seven-nine-five-six-three-two or marlboro county S C dot my rec dot com. Five or six years old flag and tackle be eight U, ten U, and twelve U. And so we're, we're really excited about getting that back on track like we used to have here in Marlboro County. Um, next thing I wanna talk about is our craft market. Last Saturday was, the craft market was a success. We had, uh, thirty total vendors. It was hot though. It was extremely hot, uh, but we did have free water for citizens that came out. And we've been had our very own local council, she came out there and sold some things. And so it was a really big success. All the vendors that were there were really happy about it. Um, and this Saturday, we will also include a water slide with that. It's hot, we're gonna have some good kids out there, the water slide. And we will hopefully increase our vendor participation. And in order to register that, uh, all the vendors need to call eight-four-three-four-three-nine-one-five-two-zero. And you call that number and they can direct you on how to register. It's still free, uh, we will be charging soon, but it's it's free. We wanna give those, um, vendors a chance to make some money. Uh, it was a little hot last time, last week, and and there was some people there, but it just wasn't as crowded. And 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 we wanna make sure that we give them a chance to make a few dollars, but it was a really good event. And it was citizens, all of Marlboro County out there selling, uh, I think, everywhere, all over. We had people living out there, people from Marlboro, Ohio.
I think my whole family made it.
Yeah, it was really good, it was a really good event, and I think everyone enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Next thing I wanna talk about, I wanna apologize for the county cleanup. Uh, we had to postpone that, um, and and I I, it really should have been posted a little sooner than it was posted on our Facebook page, county website, but, uh, it was hot at, it caught that morning. Uh, it was, it was really bad, and it already drifted a little bit, so it was very humid. And we really didn't wanna risk, uh, that, but, you know, we we decided to postpone it. And again, we should have, um, should have posted a little sooner than we did, um, on the Facebook page. But the many, you know, many citizens that did come out, I I do wanna honor that and and let it be a gift card. Um, you know, because I I think we did have about three or four, um, that did come out. I was out there myself behind the place, I got here about seven-thirty. And, you know, I said I could still do it before nine, and I got a call, it was the harvest market, but, you know, a few people here show up. So I do wanna make sure that citizens know, we are gonna postpone it, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to it. I think it's gonna need to be, I don't know, it's gonna be hot for a little while.
Spring and fall.
Yeah, and and.
That's what I was promoting all along, spring and fall.
Yeah, we're gonna probably look at it at the end of September before we try that again. Uh, but and we're gonna have, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be doing a good job of getting that to all parts of county to make sure that happens. Uh, next thing I wanna talk about, uh, on my thing here is, and and just so you know, I I did give a copy to the chairman here, so I didn't make this up. Public Works, um, I wanna talk about the gravel on the roads. Um, and some citizens have expressed, and I spoke in the last about it as well, we we are not gonna purchase that slag, um, anymore. We had quite a bit of, and it was much cheaper to get that. And and so it does have its purposes though, when you have it as a base for payment. And a lot of times C T C will get that because, you know, that's what they used to get in the cheaper, put it at the base of the thing, but we're not getting that anymore. I've already instructed our, um, public works director, whereas we talk, we may not be able to do as many roads anymore because the other stuff is far twice as cheap, the 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 gravel. But we're gonna go ahead and start using that. It's no use to put it down, it's just gonna ruin tires, it's just gonna mess up, um, people's road and make it worse than what it was before. And so I just wanted the public to know that, um, we will be getting out. And some of the areas that were first, uh, to complain about some of the road, we're gonna start getting to them real soon. We're just waiting for some of that to come in, and we're gonna get to that, uh, as well. Um, a couple more things, real quickly. I wanna announce our senior day, every first Wednesday, starting this August. Our senior day will be every first Wednesday at the banquet hall, and we're gonna start in the morning, good evening in the morning. And we're working, coinciding with the councilman agent, and we're gonna have bingo with prizes, and we're gonna have, um, some different basketball facilities, bring information and and insurance information, wills information, medical information. But it's gonna be, uh, for our seniors, fifty-five plus please, um, that's maybe senior right, so. Fifty-five plus, come out, uh, enjoy some bingo and some information on things that will be helpful, uh, to you. Parks Recreation and Renovation Schedule. July, Brightsville Park fencing is going up. Uh, August, moving to Penny Park, Ohio. We're gonna, we're gonna resurface the basketball courts and do some playground out there. Um, August, and I'm sorry, September, the Blittum Gym is gonna get a painting and restoration down there, just to kinda freshen it up, make it look a lot better. In October, we're coming back to Brightsville, and by then we will have some information on, make sure we get a really good price on getting court put out there as well. So, you know, I think it was about three months ago, we talked about the money that we have for recreation, it was already there. Go ahead, put it into those parks, and so that's what we're doing. And it's already been approved, you approved it last year, and so we're not gonna wait any longer, we're gonna go ahead and put that in there, but that's the the renovation and restoration schedule, uh, for those parks. Board of Registration is moving to the plaza building by September first. Uh, we wanna be there two weeks before we have our special election, you know, for for town of winter, uh, which is September seventeenth. So we wanna be in there by September first, and we will be moved there, uh, I've been assured by our staff that, uh, our, that H M A will be in there in a few weeks, and then once that's in there, we got some things to fix that, that the partner, um, Homeland Security won't fix, some walls, some doors, uh, maybe some other places in the building. We get that done, we'll start moving, it's gonna take about a week or so to move, but we'll have that, but we're on schedule. We actually got a schedule for moving that there. Uh, last, not least, the county website has finally been finished. Uh, we've had a company call revise, and they were the only company that actually get started before July. All of the companies that used to do these websites, they couldn't even start till July, but they got started back in March, and they finally finished it. And that's why we took pictures a little earlier, and that's the final, the final thing. I do wanna wait until we get pictures of, uh, Mr. Odom and Mr. Steen before we put everybody's up at the same time. And then we're gonna go ahead and get the website released. And I wanted it done by July first, I think it'll be, I I'm hoping, uh, July fifteenth, but it's a couple days later. It's just because we're getting pictures of those two councils. But that's it, uh, we're gonna get that launched very soon, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain it to council.
I have some.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, you've pointed on three things I wanna point out. Number one, the county website. I thank you for allowing, you know, lady to take pictures of us today, but on that website, I do think we need to put some county business such as our budget needs to be on the website, the minutes needs to be on the website, and everybody does not have Facebook. So everything that's public, we need to make sure that that's on the website. The policies, all of that needs to be on the website. You touched on the road repair, as far as not making, to make sure that none of those slug rocks are in that area. It's, um, South Bennetville area near Troop Street, that will be Oriole Lane, Jay Pleasure Lane, and Reagan Lane. They're the ones who experiencing the tire truck problem, and they have, they, the members came tonight, but members have come earlier this year. I know that we do have money in the budget for, um, different type things for for roads repair, as far as grab, um, asphalt. So I'm not sure what you planning to put down, but thank you for assuring us, and assuring them, and those of us in that district that they can rest assured that we will not be putting that on those roads again. And even though you didn't mention it, the nuisance law, we need to make sure that we read that nuisance ordinance because there is a nuisance ordinance that we need to be looking at, the whole council need to be reviewing all these ordinance, animal control and litter. Those are three main ordinance we need to be really looking at again. But I do appreciate you for acting on the website and acting on the thing with the, uh, citizens with those slug tires, slug rocks that's destroying their tires.
I just wanna add, you know, you're chair of the House Committee, with those ordinance, I mean, just need to.
Okay. And I hope that those of us who can meet and members of your team, so we can go ahead and do what we need to do for that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Um, go ahead, Ms. Flum, I get Miss Flum, yeah. On the, um, I know we, you canceled the cleanup for the county and stuff. Is there any way that, um, because the gentleman that was, had the tire issue back there, it's a bad, that's a bad issue all over, you know. Is there anything that we as the county can do to have a tire pickup or at least a designated spot for people to drop tires off and? And I don't know whether, I don't know what the cost association is with that.
There's a couple things. There's a couple long, I'm just going to talk about long-term solution real quick. We have a long-term solution that we're trying to get what they consider fairly as a green energy park, which will allow us to drop tires, those things that are hard to recycle, hard to. And we will be able to have a place where people can take those. They don't always work because people take them where they want to take them. But then we'll be able to have a place to put them. Because even if we could collect those tires, it's really hard for us to dispose them ourselves. So we're going to, we're going to, we're working on that right now, and Mr. McHale, he's not here to expand on that. That's what we're working on, on with that. As far as going to clean up and that kind of thing, that's going to have to be something that we do on a private basis. Because you know, we do have to be careful about the on-site property with a county kind of thing to clean up. It needs to happen. It needs to happen badly. But we're going to have to get some cooperation with us as well as the private citizens to go and take care of some of those things. And again, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think anybody has a problem with cleaning that. I would saw it, and it's been, I guess the policies have been realized.
It has. As of matter of fact, Sunday, there was twenty-four tires back there.
So, and they're more than just ugly. They're actually pretty bad, hell yeah.
And that's why I was, I was wondering, is there, can we develop a drop-off spot, even though we know.
That's what we could, that's what we could look into.
Let the citizen know where that is, and some will comply and others maybe not.
We could look at that, but it's, it's, I propose to council, and I'm sure with something for the diet, I don't think anyone is going to be against that outside, you know, proposal to you, so yeah, that's what I, I have no problem with that.
And abandoned houses, that's the last thing I want to talk about. There, is there any grants or anything that's available for the county?
So, I understand the county got some money for, for, you know, abandoned, abandoned properties. It's not as easy as just going and tearing them down.
It is not, but there's nuisance ordinance safe in our nuisance ordinance. Those houses that's up there, junk cars, houses, lumber, tires, furniture, and all those kinds of things that I was zoning.
Now, I want to say this.
I was zoning.
Right, I want to say this. When I, I first counseled back in August or September about nuisance ordinance. And it was expressed that we want to be careful about enforcing that, or, or, or not enforcing it, we got to enforce it, but tagging it up. Because a lot of times people who are less fortunate always get the, the party to stick with that. I remember when we talked about that. I have no problem going in and saying, we're going to strictly, strictly enforce some of this stuff. I have no problem with that. And if you want to tag it up, again, House Committee.
We have a, we have a, any citizen can make a complaint.
The issue back in September and August was that you, you had, the enforcement was one-sided. It always went into, it always went into the African-American community and tried to destroy their family property. And it was never in other communities. And I was against just really enforcing that. But I think communication, if you communicate with the families, at least do due diligence to communicate with them. You know, I think we can get over it. But there is a problem with, within the county of real bad abandoned buildings and houses. And it, it's not only just homes. It's actually commercial property as well. Because we have a commercial property in my district, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Lawson, but in her district as well. You know, that, that commercial property is questionable.
Right. We have a lot of commercial property across over county that, that, that have, that need to be torn down. And I agree with that. But again, it's not something I could just say, hey, look, let's tear this building down. I would, listen.
I'm just asking what to do. How do you advise?
Plenty of times, I would love to just tear all that stuff down. However, there's ways we have to do it, and we, a lot of times, we can't do it. Now, any building that goes ahead in any municipality, now, we really can't touch those buildings. So in that, okay, in the city of Brightsville, in the town of Clayo, the town of Call, we can't touch those buildings. We have to, you know, work with where those cities are and try and help them enforce that. But things that are in the county, you do have to get some, I mean, it takes a lot. You have to go get asbestos, all those things. If you have to get USDA, because cable actually stop tearing down houses. We're going to do some research on those. So I don't mind opening that can of worms, not necessarily can of worms, I don't mind opening that up. But it's not as simple as saying, your house is a nuisance, we're going to tear it down. We got to, they have rights as well, even with the bad house. Those homeowners have rights that we have to, we have to respect.
But sir, in all fairness to the citizen, any citizen can make a complaint and write in alleging a violation of one or more of these acts, which is about those abandoned houses are grown up in their area because it, they're worried about their property value going down. So as a property owner, I would say the same thing. I would like, if I see a whole lot of grown-up things in my area, I'm going to ask that somebody to cut that grass, someone. Because it grows up. It may not be happening all over the county, but I know it's happening in District Four and District Five. I know that's the main heart of the county of Bentonville. So I, I'm going to ask that we look at this ordinance. Our zoning appeal board was enforced, so if we put ordinance in place, we should be trying to make sure they be enforced.
As I said, if you want, you want to get your ordinance, yes?
Yes, sir.
I want to enforce what you, what you tell me you're forcing.
What we?
You and Clinton, I want to get what you tell me you're forcing.
Okay.
Any other question?
I think Mrs. Susan has something about the ordinance.
Um, you know, what I want to say about the website, as far as the website, as Mr. Cliver just said, the new one, the citizen's welcome live. I am the one that's responsible for updating all the council minutes in your plan as we get older. I have not been on it because we were updating it. I take my job very seriously. And once it's active and going strong, I will update all the ordinances, the minutes. I will make sure all the judges get on. I will do everything the council should have on. Thank you.
Anybody have any more questions for Miss Clapper? Well, thank you, sir. Good job you've done for the day. Council remarks, requests, Mr. Black, you got anything you need to talk about?
I just want to thank everybody for all you're doing, and, and Mrs. Clapper, you've been real busy lately, and I appreciate your efforts. I want you to know that, and all the rest of the staff too. But you've really been working on it, and I want you to know that we noticing it, okay? All right, that's all I got.
First, I want to thank everyone for coming out on June thirtieth for the Brightsville Annual Firework Celebration. We had a tremendous turnout, and everybody had a great time. So we just want to thank, you know, Marlboro County Parks Recreation and the workers for helping out with that event, and all the citizens who came out. To all the citizens, there are a lot of work that's going on behind the scenes. And we may not be working as fast as some people would like, but I can guarantee you that we are better off than we was a year ago. And we're going to be better off in six months. And so, just continue to look for the best in Marlboro County. We have a lot of issues, but with issues come opportunities. And we have an opportunity to really change the dynamics of our county. And I think leadership and county officials and county workers are doing their very, very best. And we want to make sure as council members that we're doing our very, very best to advocate and support all of these efforts. And there are some things that's going to be coming real soon that I think our citizens can be really proud of. But just know that the work is going on behind the scenes. And, and, and we're proud and pleased with the direction of Marlboro County. So just be on the lookout for some, some great news and some thing that we can be proud of from Marlboro County.
Councilman Strohman.
Just want to thank everybody for coming out to the craft market. Thank the staff for the hard work that they did in preparing for it and getting the word out to people. That is, that's a huge event for the citizens of the county. They enjoyed it. I enjoyed it, even with the heat. And I was very impressed with our clerk of council, her skill set and some of the things that she was sold at her booth. This was absolutely wonderful, wonderful. So, and well, moving to, the citizens, I know that the roads that you all are talking about is in bad shape. But we really are, I want the citizens to know, we really are looking at upgrading those, those roads. Mr. Cliver is just not saying that just to say it. He's saying it because they're actually looking at other alternatives to, to help out with those roads. Some of the roads, particularly some of the roads that are in my district are not traditionally county roads. And we can't spend county money or county equipment on those type roads. However, we did adopt three roads that were considered not county road. And we actually need to get the signs up now that we've adopted those roads and start maintaining them in a, in a, in a way that the citizens can, can, can at least drive home without getting a tire, a hole in the tire. And that reminds me, if I can deviate and ask the, I'm going to question, the minister had a question. Is there any insurance? Because we've had, we've had several residents that the tires were bussed, you know. It ruined their tires on the cars. I know at least one resident that had three tires replaced. And I don't know, where do we, where do our liabilities stop that are even started there? But I, I do feel like we need to have some type of compensation since we presented the problem. We created the problem by using subpar material. And so, I would, I would like for just, is there anything, any insurance available for that? Okay, mighty fine. Other than that, thank the citizens for coming out.
Ms. Lawson.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. And then I, I'm very appreciative of the fact that the county made the effort to honor the Brock family, so that was very nice. But I also want to also thank the staff for the hard work that they've been doing. Especially, what I like to see now is the fact that, that sign that we had owned, that it looks better in that area. It really does. And I hope that we can keep it clean and, but the potted plants there. I noticed that there's some big seeding out there now, so I think that's, that's great. And the events, the community events, I would like to be sure that you keep us updated on that. I'm very interested in that senior activity that's going to be held at the complex. I think that's wonderful. I think that's a good thing to have those kinds of things there. And I really want to be a part of that particular event. And I also want to also thank the fact that the towns come to our meeting, the other cities, other the towns, they try to make our meetings. And I like making their meetings when I possibly can. I like making the school board meetings when I possibly can. So with all the things that we have going on now that we're working behind the scene, it, this is a great time for Marlboro County government, Marlboro County government as a whole, the neighboring towns to work together because there are some great things that can and will be happening in the county. And I do appreciate all that is being done, just keep us informed, keep us actively informed. And I think the things have worked well for us. Thank you.
And I'd like to reiterate what Dr. Johnson said about all the behind-the-scenes hard work that staff is doing. And we've got a lot of moving parts. We need some prayers, but you know, you're doing a good job, Mr. Cliver. And just keep it up. That's it.
Everybody tune his horn. Two-two? Ever since I've been on council, one of the biggest thing that, I do believe this. Before Marlboro County grow, its towns got to grow. McCall, Clayo, Blinn, and Wallace, when we grow, everybody benefit. The thing that McCall doing with your fair, your circus, game night, Clayo doing the same thing. Texas Mail, Pate, we had Family Feud, you know, we had the Riz and Rod. So you know, we bringing our community back together. If kids come home, we've got an event in Clayo with something in McCall. So once these events continue to spiral upward on a regular basis, every other month, somebody doing something. Even McCall and Clayo and Bentonville, Blinn and Wallace, you know, Brightville. When things are going on all the time, the people ain't got, ain't got nothing to do. They can take that off the map, because we have something for everybody to do. We trying to create a culture, like on Saturdays, every Saturday morning, somebody got somewhere to go. Every Wednesday, fifty-five and over, that's all of us except for you. Your book, you know, except for your book there. But for the senior citizen, you know, you know, they got, we got things for them to do also. We had a recreation meeting yesterday with the, the new, with Mr. Coachman, and he got some great ideas. Born, raised, and Wallace went through all of the recreational program. So I think we got a great guy. You know, we, we told him that he got all full support, and he got some idea. He bounced off Dr. Johnson and myself. And when Mr. Strohman was unable to make it yesterday. But when we get together, work together in everything we do, sometimes we're going to bump heads. But that's, that what God made everybody different. We all cannot agree on everything. But when we can take the base of, the foundation, and make the foundation strong, whatever we put on that foundation will stand. And like I say, in the next six to twelve months, Marlboro County will be unrecognizable. It could be, it's a new day, new day. We got, we got a leadership in place. We got everybody working together. And we lost a good soldier, Mr. Brock. He was, he was pretty much a legend in Marlboro County. When you're talking about Marlboro Water, you're talking about Bobby Brock, you know. It could be harder. We can't replace him at all, so they don't need trying. But the thing that he left, we just pick up and move forward. And that's an antibody in our families, you know, in our personal family, in our business family. When someone leave this world, living in a better place, it's our job to pick up the baton and keep moving forward. Because we all here for a reason, because we love Marlboro County. With that being said, can I get a move for a German?
Some moves.
Move second. All in favor?
Bam bam bam.
Sweet.